We can grow against them and we can grow and we can be stronger and our children can be stronger. We thank you for the dedication that our teachers have put into this system. We thank you for our staff. We thank you for the students. We thank you for the parents of this community with the support of our public schools. Guide and direct us in all that we do and help us to be the best stewards of what's given to us. All these things we ask in our precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Our next regular board meeting will be held here March the eighth at the Education Center at seven o'clock. I don't have any other announcements tonight. Does anybody else have any announcement we need to do? Okay. Under agenda adjustments, I've been asked for one. And it was for, Mr. Putnam's got an item that needs to be put on the agenda. We'll put it on there at nine A, which would be right after the policies. And anybody else have anything that needs to be added to the agenda? Okay. Okay. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted, as amended.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rogers, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board in open session? Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the January seventh special call session minutes, the January eleventh closed session, January eleventh regular open session, and then the January twenty first facility planning minutes. Any may have a motion to that effect to approve them.
Motion to approve.
Dr. Rogers made a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Tell Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Putnam's up on the policies. Looks like a lot of policies tonight.
At the open session, nobody's here but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Nobody's here anyway.
For first reading, we have the following policies. Sixteen ten seventy eight hundred, professional and staff development. Seventeen ten forty twenty seventy two thirty, discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law. Seventeen twenty five forty thirty five seventy two thirty six, Title IX sexual harassment prohibited conduct and reporting process. Seventeen twenty six forty thirty six seventy two thirty seven, Title IX sexual harassment grievance process. Seventeen forty forty ten, student and parent grievance procedure. Seventeen forty two fifty sixty, responding to complaints. Seventeen fifty seventy two twenty, grievance procedure for employees. Seventeen sixty seventy two eighty, prohibition against retaliation. Twenty one twenty code of ethics for school board members. Twenty one twenty one, board member conflict of interest. Twenty five hundred hearings before the board. Three thousand goals and objectives of the educational program. Thirty one oh two, online instruction. Thirty three hundred, school calendar and time for learning. Thirty four ten, testing and assessment program. Forty twenty three, education for pregnant and parenting students. Forty two oh two fifty twenty nine seventy two seventy two, service animals in schools. Forty three twenty eight, gang related activity. Forty three thirty three, weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety. Forty three thirty five, criminal behavior. Forty three forty five, student discipline records. Forty three fifty three, long term suspension, three hundred and sixty five day suspension expulsion. Seventy one thirty licensure. Seventy five oh three teleworking. Seventy eight twenty personnel files. Eighty five ten, school finance officer. So most of these are a reflection in a change to child abuse and sex trafficking training, federal legislation and law that came down. And so the group set of seventeen ten to thirty four ten reflect those changes. The others are minor changes to text, legal references, cross references or footnotes. So no substantive changes there.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Putnam on these policies as presented? They'll be tabled for public input to the next regular board meeting. Okay.
All right, for second reading, we have fifteen ten forty two hundred, seventy two seventy, school safety. Thirteen hundred governing principle parental involvement. Thirteen ten zero zero two parental involvement. Fifteen hundred governing principle, safe, orderly, and inviting environment. Sixteen hundred governing principle, professional development. Seventeen hundred governing principle, removal of barriers. Those you've had for thirty days.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve all these second reading policies as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Burnett, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you want to go ahead and do the athletics that we had added to the agenda, if you're prepared to do that.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Make sure I didn't lay it out over here and leave it here.
That's all right. We're moving around a lot tonight.
Give me just a moment, I apologize.
It's all right.
Sheet here. So if you'll remember, we asked to, we talked extensively at the board work session on Thursday about real costs associated with operating athletics. And as a result of that, as a result of that, those real costs have been incurred by our schools. And we looked at high school and middle school. We looked at three main things. Number one was the officials' cost. If we're going to have an athletic competition that requires officials, we have to have them there. That's a real cost that's going to occur where we collect the first dollar from ticket sales. The second real cost is travel. It costs fuel and sometimes a driver, if we don't have a driver, to transport our athletes to and from away games. And the third and final cost was pad and helmet reconditioning and/or replacement. If you remember, we do that annually. We try to do twenty five percent of all of our pads and helmets and get them reconditioned so that we're not trying to recondition or replace all of our pads and helmets at one time. That's just good management on the part of our schools. And so those costs will occur naturally if we operate athletics, which we have. After taking a look at both high schools and the three middle schools, that total was a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixty two dollars. And it's a projected amount. I want to point that out, that that encompasses all sports. We did have to do some projecting. It's pretty accurate projecting. If we see that we have an away ball game for football to East Henderson, then we did a Google search, the total mileage from Pisgah over to East Henderson and calculated that mileage. And that's just an arbitrary example, but that's how we calculated mileage in advance. That said, we had one additional cost come in today. The Haywood Rescue Squad is going to need to charge us for a standby ambulance or rescue squad. We've been kind of going back and forth about the cost of that. I think we have rested at about fifty dollars per hour, four hours per ball game. That's for varsity and JV. And the total on that for two high schools having four home games is about thirty two hundred. So you add that on top of the already hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixty two. So what I would ask the board to do to consider an amount at a hundred and twenty thousand, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand, gives a little bit of cushion. It will, in all likelihood, come well under that. But the plan moving forward would be, once a season completes, we'll ask the schools to send us an invoice with those real and actual costs on them, and then it'll be to the penny. It won't be projecting at that point in time. So as we complete each season, we would ask schools to send us those costs that they've incurred and issue payment out of any funds you might designate moving forward.
Okay.
Would there be any questions for me?
Just one comment, Trevor, is that one thing that may make the public aware of, that we can't take maybe one bus on an activity, though, sometimes due to COVID. So sometimes now we may have to take two activity buses, so there's that, you know, twice the amount of fuel and transportation charges.
Yes, sir, that's a great point.
And one other thing is, is we're going to be reimbursing the schools as the the cost incur. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. The goal is not to offset ticket sales that have been lost. The goal is not to add athletic accounts in any way, shape, form, or fashion. The hope will be that any costs they've occurred, actual costs they've occurred this year in those three areas, and now the addition of the rescue squad standby charge, that we would pay those costs for the schools so that at a worst case, when they get to the end of the year, they will have as much money as they started the year with. We're simply trying to make them solvent so that they don't go in the hole.
Does that rescue squad cost cover middle schools too, or?
Middle schools don't require one. But again, you know, with a larger amount than the projected total amount, then that gives you a little latitude should we need to do so.
This time, I'll entertain a motion, I think we discussed it there, from the finance committee. We had a good discussion about it earlier this afternoon at our committee meeting. And Mr. Francis was the acting chair of that. Do you have a thing you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, well, I don't necessarily want to add anything. I just would like to bring before the board a motion to allow the board to spend up to a hundred and twenty thousand to keep the middle and high school athletics solvent.
We have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putman, on that one. And I think you're next on the other.
All right, just camp out up here. Next is a SBG broadcasting agreement. It's a contract to televise or broadcast the Pisgah Tuscola game. I've asked Mr. Smathers to review it. He's had a chance to do so. Mr. Smathers, anything you want to add?
It's fine.
Okay.
What will happen is a, what will result as an outcome of this agreement? We're given rights to SBG to broadcast the Pisgah Tuscola game, and in turn, they'll make a five hundred dollar contribution to the Athletic Department of Pisgah High School. And so that gives us an opportunity for good quality broadcast coverage of that very big game.
Well, with the limitations we have on attendance at this time, I think that'd be great. So those of us that will not be able to get in would be able to see it and cheer from home or wherever. Sounds like a good idea to me.
I think that's correct, my forty.
We have a motion to.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, my forty two, this contract agreement, this big game.
Very good. Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Burnett, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Next on our agenda, board members, we've, we do have vacancy on the Mountain Projects Board of Directors. They've asked us to reappoint. Ms. Barrett was serving on that board. And she, you know, did not go through reelection. So she, we do have a vacancy on that board, and we've had a request to fill that.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to bring forward the most honorable Ronnie Clark to serve as our representative on the Mountain Projects Board of Directors.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Say, Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Can I vote for myself?
You sure can. We just went through the ethics thing, and it did say, I think that was one of the points that was made, is that you can vote for your.
Or against.
Yeah, you could vote against. And anyway, so we have it. Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I did.
Francis.
Okay, Mr. Francis seconded, I'm sorry. All right, any other question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ronnie voted for himself. Very good. Thank you very much. And thank you for your willingness to serve, Mr. Clark. And again, if you can't make it sometime, maybe you could ask for some, someone else to fill in if you can, okay? Thank you. Next, I assume Ms. Wood's going to come in on a Zoom?
She is remote, I believe.
Okay, she's coming in remote.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Jeannie.
Hey there.
Hi.
Good evening. Chairman Francis, for your approval, and board members for your approval, you have the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Haywood County Schools calendar.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments about the calendar? It's in the future, so next year's calendar.
Very similar to what we've designed the last few years when we went to the hour count.
Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion. We approve it as presented.
Make a motion.
Mr. Nesbit's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, for Dr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
You also have the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Haywood Early College Calendar for approval. And I just want to add one more thing, that both of these calendars for next year did require us to add five optional, remote learning optional workdays.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the Haywood Early College Calendar.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion, seconded by Dr. Rogers, to approve the Haywood Early College Calendar as presented. Any question or comments or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Wood and all the members of the Calendar Committee for that work. Some of you have served on that committee through the years. And sorting through all the state regulations and coming up with a calendar can take some time. But I just wanted to acknowledge all the people who've worked on that.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the board as well, Ms. Wood, let them know that we do appreciate the work of the Calendar Committee.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Barker.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, I have a request for a class size waiver for North Canton Elementary in second grade. This would need to be approved pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C dash three oh one. Our in-person class size there in second grade has increased, and we're still providing remote instruction. So this request has to be received and sent to, with your approval, and sent to the Department of Public Instruction. If any overage occurs after the fortieth instructional day of school, so we're well beyond that. And this is, this waivers only would only be good for the remainder of this school year for that class.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Say, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. I assume Mr. Francis is going to do it?
I'll do it for him.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Clark. The Finance Committee met earlier today and reviewed all the monthly financial reports, and everything looked good. So at this time, I would like to bring before the board a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis, seconded by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The Finance Committee has another item to bring before the board. This is the annual audit contract. This is done by Anderson Smith Wyke. And I believe there is not, there's, the cost is the same as it was last year. Mr. Smathers, you've looked at it as well. It's what we've done in the past. So at this time, I'd like to bring this before the board to approve them to do the audit contract again.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We have one more item to bring before the board, and this is the motion regarding the central office loan. When this was presented to us in the workshop, we looked at it, and I believe that the county has already approved to get the loan up to two million dollars. I think we voted to do a million dollars of that, but since we've already been approved for two million, I think, or the Finance Committee would like to bring before the board the option of changing that request from one million to the full two million dollars for the loan that has already been approved.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, with Dr. Rogers, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
We're choosing the lowest bidder on that, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Any other comments, questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I believe that's all we have from the Finance Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the Finance Committee work and the building the grounds work as well. Next, we have Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, board members, you're very aware that there are many state regulations and policies that require reports to you. Last year, we were required to begin reporting before the fifteenth of February, the number of support personnel in certain classifications, and to tell you if any of those are new. So I don't know if she has the attachment up, but it's, I can read it to you. School psychologists, we have six, school counselors, nineteen, school nurses, seven, school social workers, five. And then new employees for us, as we're trying to build our own staff of people who can provide therapeutic services and bill, we have two clinical social workers who have started. We hope over time, we'll be able to do a lot more of that and rely less on third party people. That's a total of thirty nine. Does not require your approval, that's a report we are required to make to you.
Okay.
Those physicians, are most of those, do we get state funds for those? Are those paid out of local funds? Or how do those physicians, how do we get to those?
Those are paid from a variety of sources, as you know. Or if we pause to think back, school nurses, really, that's a contract with the state, excuse me, with local public health. I think we pay them about a hundred and four thousand each year. But as you can see, that gets us seven nurses. So they have funds from other sources. School psychologists are paid with various fund sources, and so none of those really come from one source.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Nolte on the mental health support personnel report? Thank you for the report.
Yes, sir. My pleasure. Board members, Pat Smathers, our board attorney, spent a good amount of time Thursday at the work session, at the work session, sharing and describing three documents related to deed conveyance that was related to the loan. And at this time, I bring it to you for your consideration of the deed conveyance as part of the loan process.
Okay.
Pat's here if he needs to add or answer questions.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
Motion to approve the conveyance deed, the conveyance to the county regarding our loan.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Nesbit, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that's.
Thank you, board. I think the last item for me in that group. Oh, no, two more. All right, great. We also, on Thursday, spent some time talking about moving the February remote learning optional workday from the fifteenth to a day the following week, and hoping that we can keep it there and not use it for weather. If we do that, and again, we talked a good bit about this on Thursday, that would allow our schools, our four high schools, to bring all of their juniors in without other students on campus and have one administration of the ACT, which you know can be very critical for entering various colleges and universities. And so I have done that, but would also love your approval if you will authorize it. So there's one, there would be one day the next week, I think that is the twenty fourth, excuse me.
It is, Haywood Early Colleges is the twenty third.
The Haywood Early Colleges is the twenty third, twenty third. The two large high schools in Central Haywood is the twenty fourth.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I might could make a motion that we approve Dr. Nolte's to remove the remote data learning to the February twenty fourth.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Burnett, any question or comments on the motion on the floor?
I think it's a good thing to help these children with their ACT exams, and I think it's a great move, so help them any way we can.
Now, if for some reason we get snow and that we have, is it still optional to move that back to the snow day and then use a teacher workday for that ACT?
We have the freedom to do that under the law, but I have no intention to do that unless I am severely burdened with a lot of weather between now and then. We believe the ACT is important. We feel like our students will be much better off if they can come in and be in three different locations on campus. locations on campus, A group, a B group, and remote-only students, and take it in one administration. And we know that, that test is very important for a lot of them, maybe not all of them, but for a lot of them. So I do not want to move it and probably would not unless we had a significant amount of snow between now and then.
I agree. I think it's very important that we have that day set aside for this very important test. Should we incur additional weather, I would encourage us to take every option to look at not adding those to the end of the year.
If you'd like, I can say a little bit more about that, the days and sequences after you vote, if you want me to do that.
Okay. That might be good. Any other questions or comments about this motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And again, we talked about this a good bit Thursday at the work session, and I know you all have been in lots of conversations, but certainly for people who might be listening in today, there is a lot of confusion around the calendar, the governor's recent words and remote days. And you all know I can be really long-winded, but I'll try to break this down and make it as brief as possible. Every school system in the state, every public school system, beginning last summer, was required to add five remote learning optional workdays to their calendar, and those were days that were placed on workdays or days when students were not there. So those first five days were in addition to the 1,025 hours that we were required to have, and that is true for 115 school systems in the state. And we did that, that we used the first one for a day in October. We used one on the general election day, and then unfortunately, we've begun using some of them for snow. And the idea is, is if you can use a remote learning optional workday, you don't have to extend the calendar. You call it a remote learning optional workday, and you take the day that students were there and put it where the remote learning optional workday originally sat in the calendar. There is a second provision in the law just for us and other school systems like us that have a snow waiver. And that second provision is if you have a snow waiver and a lot of inclement weather, you can add up to five more remote learning optional workdays. Again, the benefit of placing those in the calendar is you get to count some instructional hours on that day, and you're not unnecessarily extending the calendar. So we have added 10 to the calendar, and unfortunately, we've already used seven. So as we have additional misses or closures because of inclement weather, we still have some choices, and our last student day right now is still pretty early. There is that remote optional, remote learning optional workday in February, which we do not want to use for weather, but it's there. We had a blizzard, and we were out all week, maybe even it snowed that day at the ACT or that week, and we could move it around. There is a remote learning optional workday in March that we can certainly use. There is a remote learning optional workday left the Friday before spring break, and personally, I don't want to use that one, but it's there, and it's there for a reason, in case we get a lot of inclement weather. We also currently, the last day is Thursday, June the 3rd, 3rd or 4th?
Thursday's the last day.
And it's the 3rd, that's right.
June the 3rd.
Thank you, Ginny. How am I doing, Ginny? Am I explaining this okay?
You're doing great so far.
She's there. So far.
Opportunity for messing up.
Oh, yeah, well, give me a few more minutes. So we have that day. We also have the also very unpopular Memorial Day, which again, we would not use unless it was just really, really a lot of snow. And then we also can, and we have done this many times through the years and do not want to do it this year, we can extend into the work, excuse me, the week of June 7th. We would not, for any reason that I'm aware of, go past the 11th. So we still have lots of options. The options just aren't popular and easy as they were. So here's the bad news and here's the good news. Bad news is, is we've missed 13 days. Five for ransomware, one for a flood, one for a fire that cut phone and internet, and then the rest, the other six, were for weather. So we've done really pretty well if we're still at June the 6th. So that's our plight right now, and we're in pretty good shape considering everything, and we will be as judicious and thoughtful as possible. I will tell you, last thing I'll say about this unless you have questions, is we're pretty close on our 1,025 hours, because when we missed for the ransomware days, we did not automatically push the calendar back. So we're pretty close. We still have some time available for delays if we need them, but certainly, I don't think we can waste any whole days without moving some days around.
Very good. Any other questions or comments about the calendar? Like Mr. Rogers asked me about...
Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, I have one thing. It's not really necessarily about the calendar, and thank you for that, Dr. Nolte. I had several emails with concerned parents and people of our community about our education opportunities as far as getting our middle school and high school, secondary schools back onto a Plan A, as well as our kindergarten through five. And I would like to thank those people who sent those emails in, and I would like to ask y'all to please, you know, appeal and contact by any means possible our legislature. We know we have the Senate Bill 37, which will be voted on tomorrow by the Senate and be moved to the House. That would give the districts a little more leeway to possibly move back to the Plan A program. I believe in the last speech in the governor's press conference, it kind of made a little bit of confusion that we're wanting schools to get back in, back in, you know, in person, and, but he did not, that was not in the plan, to move secondary and high schools back to, you know, middle school and high school back to a Plan A. They're still on a Plan B. So like I say, if there's, please, you know, here, even send emails, letters, whatever you can to the governor, and pleading with them that they would give our districts the flexibility to make that decision. And yes, we're, this board, and I know our staff is very well with these parents and these concerns, that we would love to have these kids back in school, and we do understand the academic performances, that it would help improve our children's education abilities to be in person. So I just, I just make a plea to all those who sent us that. Pass this on to your legislatures, even if the legislature from not, not from this district, and you might know how to contact them, you can get on their site, and you can find the emails for, for all of our Senate and House representatives. And just send them all, just flood them with emails and requests, and maybe we'll get this, maybe it'll, maybe it'll come to being sooner than we, than we hoped, to get our, get our students back in the classroom. Thank you.
And just to add to that, in short, we're operating at the greatest level of in-person learning available to us through the governor's executive board.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And I appreciate y'all's comments. As elected officials, you can probably say more things like that than I should be saying. We specifically ask, in a statewide superintendent's meeting, if they had changed the rule for the number of middle school and high school students on the bus, and they have not, and when I say we, superintendents from across the state, we specifically ask if we could go to Plan A minimal distancing at middle and high like we did elementary. They did not say yes. They said some things, but they did not give us that option. And so that speech was for the 25 school districts in the state who have not been in in-person learning, and it sounded like it was for the rest of us. And just about 80% of us have been going in person, and I can assure you, no one's going more often than us. We're going five days a week with middle and high on a rotational basis. Many other districts are only using four days a week to do that. So just trust community that we are going as much as we are authorized to go. And, you know, if we change, we'll be contingent upon our board having more options, and then our board examining it and making a decision. Thank you.
Good comments. We're getting a lot of calls and mail about that subject, so thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate it. And Dr. Rogers. And Dr. Nolte. Now, we have our personnel. I think it's last on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, board, staff and guest, I'd like to bring before you this evening the personnel that was discussed previously in closed session for your information. We have eight separation from employment. We have 20 intern twos, 15 intern ones, and four leave of absence for your information for your approval. We have eight employment, eight employments, 31 employee status changes, two leave of absence, 20 employee coach, seven non-employee coaches, and 10 volunteer services.
This time we entertain a motion. We approve the personnel as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Burnett's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. There's nothing else to come before the board. Meeting adjourned.